I'd like to call to order the July 26, 2016 Oak Harbor City Planning Commission meeting. This evening let the record show that Commissioner Santi Peterson is absent. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for June 28, 2016. Do I have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the meeting on June 28, 2016.
A second.
I second the motion.
So, the motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes approved. The first item always on the agenda is the public comment where we set aside 15 minutes of our meeting to accept public comment for items not otherwise on the agenda. Do I have anyone that would like to step up to the microphone with? Seeing none, I'll close that part of the meeting. So my understanding is that Arnie Peterschmidt is going to take us through the transportation plan update, and this is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing after Arnie gives his comments.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Arnie Peterschmidt. I'm one of the engineers on the city staff at the Public Works Department, and I'm here to kind of present and provide an overview of the final transportation plan for the city of Oak Harbor. Let's see. Sure. So Oak Harbor has revised and updated its transportation plan in coordination with the city's comprehensive planning efforts of this year, and actually began earlier than that last year, too, to maintain our compliance with the requirements of the Growth Management Act. This current update places a greater emphasis on all the modes of transportation, not just simply vehicle throughput, but also pedestrian, transportation, transit, cycling, and freight. All of these different modes have been assessed for their level of service in our system and project list developed to meet our needs in the 20-year horizon. And then those, the project list was combined with a funding available to the city for transportation projects and as, to bring it all together into, you know, a plan for action. The transportation element and the transportation plan, those two terms have been kind of interchangeable for the last several months, but the transportation element is a derivative of the transportation plan. It's a larger document with more information in it. And the element was adopted with the update to the comprehensive plan in June of this year, and now we're working to adopt the entire plan. Oops. Huh, I'm skipping a whole series of slides. There we go. Thank you. Should I just ask for the next slide?
It should work. I don't know what's kind of a binky tape. If it doesn't work, go ahead and try it again.
The outline of the plan is there on the screen. Seven chapters, beginning with an introduction. The second chapter goes through our analysis of our existing system and the trends that we're seeing in transportation, population, land use, economy, and jobs. There was a, Chapter Three focuses on our community outreach program, stakeholder outreach, where we gather input from the community in general and also our partners and other agencies such as Washtata, the Navy, and the county. Following those efforts, we examined our goals and policies from the previous iteration of the plan and revised and polished those a bit, and then went on to Chapter Five where our vision for the future of Oak Harbor's transportation system is explained and projects planned or selected. Chapter Six brings in the financial element where we match up our projects, the projects that we develop through our planning efforts with our financial capabilities and come up with a plan to do some improvements going forward. And then Chapter Seven kind of expands on that, provides some more information on what may be possible, you know, beyond our relatively brief project list. Next slide, please. Our goals and policies, our goals in particular got a major revision this time. The previous plan, they were, there was nine instead of six, and they were pretty wordy and not, we didn't find them to be very user-friendly. So we really streamlined these and put more details into the policies. But our number-one goal for this transportation plan is safe for all users, and that incorporates all modes. Connected and efficient is next. Multimodal, we've raised non-vehicular traffic to a comparable level with vehicular traffic on our network in the consideration of projects and how they'll be built and assessed. Next is financially environmentally sustainable, complementary of the setting, our community, land use, and other portions of our comprehensive plan. And then finally, integrated with our regional transportation network, primarily the state and the county. This is just a graphic of, kind of shows the process, basically, that some of the highlights of the process where our needs are identified, priorities established, level of service for the different modes and different networks. You know, some streets are, we designated as priorities for different modes because there is an inherent conflict between different modes, and so oftentimes it's better to emphasize different parts of our network for different modes. For example, this, the segment comprised of Southwest Third, Cabot, and Southeast Fourth. That's a, that's a street system that goes all the way across town, but it has a more residential character, lower traffic speeds, narrower road, much easier for somebody on foot or on a bicycle, and it's, it's close to Woodby Avenue and parallels Woodby. So somebody that's not driving a car can efficiently cross town using that street combination. And then we progress from, from the network and our priorities to develop the project list, and you can see some graphics that come from this, you know, with, with project locations and, and our level of service standards for pedestrian facilities, and then a graphic with the layered network kind of explained in a visual way. We put in a substantial effort toward reaching out to the community and our stakeholders. We used a variety of tools, including the city's webpage and Facebook page. We solicited comments at community events, and we did surveys online and in-person both. And then the, the highlights were a pair of open houses. One in November where we solicited comments from our community on what they thought we needed and where the priority networks for the different modes should be. We used that to help us draft up a list of projects, and, and then we brought that draft project list out for the February open house. And both of these events were well-attended. There was good energy in the room, a lot of talking, a lot of ideas. It really came off well. This is one of our graphics from the, the open houses where to provide a little information to our stakeholders and our community members that were interested in, in the sorts of things that we're looking for, and hopefully we inspired some, some good comments regarding our current system and the growth that we expect it to see in the coming years with expansion of the base. So all that work led to what seems like a very short project list, but these projects are very carefully considered and matched up with our financial resources that we currently have and that are fairly certain. And so we come out with maintenance, more of an emphasis on maintenance, taking good care of what we have, and, and then a large capital project, which is Northeast Seventh Avenue, reconstructing it to accommodate all modes efficiently and safely. And that turned out to be our highest-rated project through a whole process of developing the plan. That one came out on top. But recognizing that we still need some flexibility and, and things will change in our 20-year timeframe here, we've, we've got other projects listed and described in the plan. The high-ranking projects that satisfy the majority of the goals and are complementary of our policies that we've established in this plan are Tier One projects. And then Tier Two are also good projects, but they don't score quite as highly as Tier One or the projects selected for implementation. So this, this table shows, you know, there's quite a, there's quite a, a lot of possibilities out there, and if we're, if we have greater success than anticipated with things like grants or the programs at the federal and state level change that, that provide us with more resources, then we can pull up projects in from Tier One and maybe even Tier Two and, and get some of those done as well in the future. This graphic is just a quick representation of our top roadway projects. These projects typically include facilities for all modes, even though they're primarily roadway projects. And then the next graphic shows pedestrian projects. And, and then the third one in this series is bicycle projects with the yellow representing signage and lane markings, what we call a shareau, and then the green representing dedicated bike lanes. And that concludes the presentation. My name is up there, Dennis LaFever, and also Kendra Breland. We are the project team that, that got together and, and developed this plan with help from our community and our stakeholders and some of you. So please feel free to contact any of us if there are questions.
Thank you, Arnie. Any comment?
Just a lot of, a lot of work has gone into this. It seemed like every time we, we meet, it's something about transportation, and it's a good thing.
Yes.
And it's gratifying to see the public involved and, you know, bringing their, their thoughts and us adjusting our schedule or our plans to what, you know, the public wants.
Mm-hmm.
So that's, that's a positive. It was sad to go from eight projects to two, but funding is what funding is, so it makes sense.
I am opening the public hearing at this time. That would be me, would I have anybody from the public wanting to make comment? So, carry on, council or commissioners. Al?
Could you remind me what the term concurrency means again?
Concurrent is a term, well, it's a, it's a program in, with relationship to, for transportation where we're required to develop and maintain a transportation network concurrent with development. So as we grow, we have to improve our street system to accommodate that growth and still function correctly.
So that maybe answers part of my second question, which is, in your appendix F, which is the project list cost estimates.
Mm-hmm.
I notice, well, first of all, are those in any specific quarter, or are they just?
What, which page are you looking at?
Page 101 in the draft. The reason I ask is because I noticed that the Gun Club Road Extension, which rated very, very low, at 2.19, is included where a lot of other things that are rated much higher aren't included, and it's like super expensive.
It, yes. No, the, the Gun Club Road Extension is a project that comes up from time to time as developers look at the property out there.
Right.
So it's, it's something we've thought about more than most, but it's, it's placement here does not represent its priority on our project list.
So it's on there, part of this concurrency issue, really?
Yes.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Motion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to recommend to the city council approval of resolution number 16-23 adopting the 2016 City of Oak Harbor Transportation Plan.
I second the motion.
We have a motion that's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes, and I can close this public hearing, and we'll start on with the next. Arnie, you're going to take the next item also.
If it's the tip, yes. So every year, City of Oak Harbor is, is required to update its transportation improvement program, known among staff as the TIP for short. It's a six-year planning document. It's, it's something that's a trickle-down from the federal government, and it's, it's something that we're required to do before we can accept and spend any federal funds. So we revise it every year with projects that are funded, where we've drawn the funding dropping off and new projects coming onto the list. This year's TIP has been updated to reflect the current, or the update to the transportation plan and the transportation element. Whoop. Background, okay. Require, yeah. It's required by law, and as I mentioned, every, it's an annual update. After we go through the update process here and, and the update is approved, then we forward it on to the newly-formed Island Transportation Planning Organization, who in turn incorporates it into their larger TIP and forwards it on to the state. And then the state in turn takes all of the TIPS from the transportation planning organizations around the state and submits them to the feds, and it's part of the larger surface transportation funding program that's nationwide. Did I, background, okay. This year, we're, we only have two projects on the TIP. We have the Northeast Seventh Avenue Reconstruction Project. We don't have grant funds secured for that yet, but we anticipate that we'll be applying for this project in the upcoming funding cycles. In the past, it's been a competitive project, and so we expect to have a good degree of success with it. We'll be applying for federal surface transportation funds, state transportation improvement board funds. We will have to provide a local match to both these funding, grant funding sources on the order of 13 or 15 percent, depending on which one we get, or if we get both of them. And the total project cost estimate currently stands at 4.7 million. That includes design, acquiring right-of-way that we need to, to do the project, and then also construction. The schedule you see there with design occurring in 2018 and right-of-way in 2019 and, and construction in 2020 is a bit on the idealistic side, but if things were to follow together well and, and no surprises, we could see a new street there in 2020. What happened to? Huh. It's, okay, there. The other project on the TIP is the overlay of Northwest Heller Street. We have, there are federal funds committed to this that we have not obligated yet, but we will soon toward the end of this year, and then we'll get going on design early in 2017 with construction to follow in the summer of 2017. And it's an overlay of Heller Street from Woodby Avenue to Crosby Avenue. So the, we have approximately $300,000 of federal funds earmarked for this through the local, uh, surface transportation funds that were awarded to this region, and then we'll have to provide a match with the total estimated cost for the design and, and construction of the overlay at $361,000. Okay, yep. I broke it. Anyway, it does not cost the city, it knows direct expenses involved in updating the TIP every year. It's something, you know, it takes a little staff time, but, oops. And then our requested action is, is a recommendation to approve the six-year TIP for the period 2017 to 2022.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing dealing with this six-year TIP. Do I have any comments from the commissioners?
I just have one question. What determines whether or not a project will receive state funding?
It's usually a competitive process where there's a pool of money that's available for certain types of projects, and the public agency will put together an application, and it'll be submitted and then evaluated, and, and if it's a project that matches the criteria for, of the program, then it'll get, better than others, it'll get funded.
Okay.
There was quite a bit of discussion at the last city council meeting about a speed limit change on Bay Shore. Is that something that comes up in this process?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Any input from the public?
I just have a question. Does Oak Harbor mean paving?
Yes.
Any other comments? Entertain a motion?
I recommend to the city council adopt the 2017-2022 six-year transportation improvement program.
I second the motion.
I'll second it. Have a motion been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes, and we'll close this public hearing also.
Thank you.
Thank you, Arnie. The last item this evening is code amendments, extensions for Platts. It's a public meeting, and Senior Planner Cack Mack will lead us through this.
Thank you. Good evening. Cack Mack, Senior Planner. Arnie was having trouble with the, with the clicker, then we're going to have trouble with this presentation, but we'll see what happens. So Platts extensions, and this is a code amendment to update the city's code related to Platts extensions to reflect the, some of the changes that have been done at the state level. So I'll go through a, a brief presentation to provide the background information for this. This is just a public meeting, and this is just to brief the commission on some of this information and have a discussion about it if you have any questions or concerns, and we'll come back and do the actual public hearing with the text amendments and the actual language that would fit into the code. So this is just FYI and, and just to get you updated on what we're doing. Oh, yes, we're having trouble. Okay, there you go. Thanks. So the RCW 5817140 sets the time period for final Platts and preliminary Platts, and that time limit is five years. So I'll, I'll go through the process of what that five years actually means in my next slide. But basically, once a preliminary Platt is approved, you want to get to the final Platt, or the applicant wants to get to the final Platt within a five-year time period. Well, during the down economical period around the 2007 to 2010 time, legislature changed that time period because movement was very slow and Platts were starting to expire. And so in 2010, they made, they passed a legislature to amend the time, and they extended it. And then they came back in 2012 when things weren't picking up again, they extended it again, and then 2013, they did that, another extension. I'll go through all the changes. So they went from seven to nine to 10, and the time periods apply differently based on whether it's a preliminary Platt that was approved before a certain time, or whether it's an, or shoreline, shoreline jurisdiction. So there's some different things that the 2010, 2012, and the 2013 legislature did, and some things changed the previous legislature, legislature language, and some of it didn't. So we had to kind of like wait till everything was done, and we can kind of figure out what exactly they tried to, what the intent was before we did the code amendments. So, okay. So in order to understand what code amendment we're doing, what is the timeframe we're actually changing, I'm going to just go through the plating process that we go through from preliminary Platt to final Platt so that you understand what is exactly that we are amending. This is just a summarized version of our process. It's not very detailed. This is just to understand the timeframe. So once a preliminary Platt, we receive an application, we determine it to be complete, we do the internal review, and then we have a public hearing, and it goes for approval. Planning Commission looks at it, and then the city council looks at it as well. So from here, once the preliminary Platt is approved, the applicant has two ways to get to the final Platt. Now I'll go through the process that is usually done in Oak Harbor, but there's a different process as well, and, you know, it makes sense. It's important to understand that there is another process because then it helps us understand the language that we're going to add in the code. So the two processes, I'll go through what we normally have in Oak Harbor. So once the preliminary Platt is approved, usually the developers will develop civil plans, and then they'll develop the construction plans, and, and they do the construction, and then the city inspects it, and then when everything is done, they come and submit a final Platt application, and the final Platt gets approved. Now that timeframe from the preliminary Platt to when the final Platt gets approved is the five-year limit that was set originally and then was changed to seven, nine, and 10. So the- So the other process is, once a preliminary plat is approved, the developer may want to sell lots immediately and do that as a way of starting to get the funding in and note the demand and so on. So there's a different process. So what they do is they post a bond, they get to the final plat application, and they'll do the final plat approval even before they do any construction, put any of the roads in. Now, this, that time period also is affected by all these code amendments. You've got to get the final plat approval, you know, the five, nine, and 10 years applies, but usually it's done a little faster. So once the plat is approved, then they start selling lots and they have to do the construction. So they'll develop the civil plans, and they'll do the construction, and then they'll do the final inspection. And there is some language in all this legislature that talks about vesting of when, of the final. So once a final plat is approved, then it's, the state legislature talks about how long uses that are part of the final plat is vested in that plan. And so they've changed some of the timing on the vesting period for final plats, and that's why I wanted to kind of show you the process so that you go through that as well. Now, the vesting period, of course, applies to the final plat done in the other process as well. So even though you do the construction and all, get to the final plat, your plat has vesting periods as well. So that is just basically the general process and the time limits that the state legislature has. Now, the language that impacts us is right at the, you know, one affects the preliminary plat and how long that's valid, and the other is the final plats and how long they're vested. So that's the language that we're going to consider for amendment. And the language is right there, and I know that it's small enough that you can't see, but it is there. Yeah. So for your benefit.
Doesn't help.
Oh. Yeah, there you go, thank you. So for your benefit, I did put the language up there so that you can see. So for preliminary plats that were approved before January 1, 2008, and so this is before we went down in the, down in the recession period, and not within a shoreline, gets 10-year extension. And for preliminary plats that are approved before January 1, 2015, but have, but are within a shoreline jurisdiction, the extension is seven years. And for a preliminary plat that's approved after January 2015, it goes back to that original five years that they started off. So that's the, that's as far as the preliminary plat's concerned. And final plat, same 10, 7, and 5 years, but it talks about the vesting period for those final plats, similar to the preliminary plats, same time period. So that is the code amendment we're going to bring forward to you in a public hearing at the next meeting, but instead of trying to cover all of this information at that time, we wanted to just give that information, and if there is any questions or clarifications we need to do, we can address it and then bring the code amendments. And then you can look at the language and understand what exactly is being done, and if we as staff have missed something that doesn't make sense, I'm glad you guys are reviewing it, and so you can, you can give us the feedback on that. So that's all I have for you today, so if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them. So, any questions?
We'll save our questions for the next.
For the next meeting, all right, sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Well, that's the end of the agenda items. No further business. I call a meeting adjourned.